The following program is sponsored by The Greek, Ely's Radio Shack dealer, five seventy Altman in downtown Ely, and brought to you as a public service by Georgetown Media in Ely, Nevada. White Pine County Commission Meeting, May twelfth, two thousand twenty-one.
We're burning daylight here.
It's my fault, George.
I know whose fault it is, not yours.
of May the twelfth. The law will stand and join in the pledge. James, why don't you lead us today? Thank you.
The flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, as is normal, the first moment of the meeting is for silence, meditation, prayer, whatever you like, so let's take the first moment of the meeting for that. meeting is the public comment. Is there any public comment this morning? Please come forward, state your name.
Fred Fisher, my name. I am representing Mountain View subdivision myself and a number of acquaintances in the neighborhood in regards to Steptoe Park, basically, and the surrounds. You saw recently at Broadbent Park, the damage and destruction. We've got pictures here, but this is all rather sudden, but we just heard a boiling point, and so came down, and I'd probably like to get this on agenda later, but something serious needs to be taken into consideration this time. Been approached before about getting decent lighting around Steptoe Park for lots of reasons, but first of all, security. And the amount of damage that's been done recently, if you haven't seen, we've got a bunch of pictures here and more. I'd love to hear from any of the commissioners if they'd like to talk to me later. My number is two nine three, one two, two seven. Again, my name is Fred Fisher, and I live at ten twenty-five Mountain View Drive. We've had all kinds of damages throughout the entire park, all around. We've had gunshots fired from Steptoe Park. I don't know if you're aware of that or not. That's happened just maybe a month or so ago, and then a few weeks after that nearby. It's so dark out there. That's why people don't get to utilize the park over the years, is one of our arguments. It doesn't. If we had more light, especially in the low light hours of the fall and spring, more people in the community could use it. More people would use it now, I'm certain. They already know that, except they're afraid to go out there because of the punks and stuff that are hanging around and doing damage like they are elsewhere in the community. But we think that lighting is long, long overdue, where the taxpayers in that area, but the whole community uses that park. It's not even adequate lighting. The lights aren't working at the gazebo's. The electric box is open and exposed. There are just so many things that need to be attended to, and I don't know how many of you use it, and it might be that you don't. It's logical, you know, it's possible, but so you just don't notice these things like we do when we're right there. We have, you know, wherever they got light, it seemed like, the motorcyclists, the juvenile delinquent types that are out there with no license, no registration, shouldn't even be out there, it's not even legal, let alone the speeds that they're running. They go down through that dark stuff. They come down by the hospital, and they just fan out through Mountain View Drive, through the two alleys, and when it's dark, they race right around and go up around the park and down Fifteenth Street. It's just, it's just a big problem, but mostly just for security first and foremost, and then safety is just, I mean, that's the same thing right there. Look, it's a nice park. There's been a lot of people put a lot of effort into that park and money, and we've put a lot of maintenance into it, promoting it and watering it, and we could be getting more use out of it if we had better lighting. People could play softball a little longer, other things out there, and I think that some people out there a little more often, a little more wholesome, which most of our community is, could maybe either stop it or help possibly law enforcement. It's gotta be pretty tough if you're patrolling and you're trying to look all the way from one end to the other, which you can't do, to answer or respond. I'm sorry.
Fred, did you repeat the last four digits? The last four digits of your phone, would you mind?
I probably gave you the wrong number, I'm sorry. Two nine three, one two, two seven. I gave you my home number. Okay. And if there's anybody I could talk to, if you could direct me who I might want to talk to, to how to further this along. We could get a petition, everybody wants to get a petition, but I didn't know if it, we just didn't have much time. We wanted to get it on the record, get your, tell them. Just real quick, the park is county park. The streets are the city streets, so I think the combination between the two, everybody's aware of it. I use that park a lot. I think as a joint effort, you know, you saw what happened at Broadbent, your parks at the other end of town. We only have a very few officers on staff, and it's very hard for them to be in two places at one time, but it's an ongoing problem all across the community, but that's as much as I'll comment on that.
It's been growing, but we also, what we want to do is we want to be able to help. A lot of us get involved, try to help Sheriff's Office, but we could also better job. Thank you.
Okay, is there any other public comment? I should ask, on the phone, is there any on the phone line? Not on the phone, anybody else in the audience that want to speak in public comment? Please come forward, say anything. Anybody? Okay, hearing that and saying that, whoa.
Hold on.
Oh, I'm sorry. God forbid.
God forbid, yeah. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, you're so kind. Mr. Chairman, at the last County Commission meeting held on April twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-one concerning the sale of county-owned property, you stated that you talked to city officials and told the street lighting and fire hydrants were not required. You were grossly and, you were grossly misinformed. Who did you talk to? Later that same day, I attended the regional planning commission, and I asked if the parcel that JCR had purchased from the county required street lighting and fire hydrants. Buzz Roselair from Basin Engineering was present. He presented the parcel map, and answered, yes, street lighting and fire hydrants would be required per code every five hundred feet. Commissioner Carson was there. I don't know who's misleading you, but we don't need to go backwards. We need to go forward. You just heard the complaints that Mr. Fisher brought up. Public safety is number one, and you're ignoring that. Mr. Chairman, on your agenda, item one B one, you're to consider the approval of the road assistance agreement with Western Oil, Western Gas, or Gold. NRS does not allow the county to assist any private business. That company caused the damage to that road and needs to hire their own contractor and not use county taxpayers' equipment and employees. It appears you're doing this, I think we need to stop that. Mr. Chairman, on your agenda, item two A, one A, you should consider the approval of providing notice to City of Ely, the White Pine County intends to renew the lease, the golf course, for an additional thirty years. Does the county pay the golf, has the county golf course paid for its water usage, in particular the one hundred eleven million gallons of water used in the past, at the same rate other city users did? Did they get a sweetheart deal? I want to know. If they haven't, you need to table, you need to table that item until the bill is paid in full. I remind you, the golf is a luxury, not a necessity. Commissioners, the golf have a conflict and need to abstain. There should be no sweetheart deals, and it appears there's going to be. Mr. Chairman, the county needs to solicit a newspaper that is fair and balanced. Over a year ago, I paid on April seventh, two thousand twenty.
You brought this up, we have nothing to do with the newspaper.
That's fraud.
Go on to something else, George.
You need to stop, and you need to address it.
Sorry.
Period.
That's enough of that.
I want to remind you, Mr. Chairman, that I get to receive proper repairs of my building for which I paid a required permit.
You brought that up a thousand times, too.
You haven't corrected the problem.
That's it, that's it, George. Not going to discuss that again. We've answered that.
Well, you've been paying for the damage.
That's it, George.
Mr. Chairman, on your regional planning board, it continues to fail to use the sound system at the meetings. One cannot hear what members are saying because the voice doesn't carry it. They don't speak clearly, and with a mask, distorts the sound. They need to use the sound system. The open meeting law requires that. You're not adhering to the rules, you're letting them go half-baked. That needs to stop. Mr. Chairman, the planning commission member, Carol Matancy, has yet to correct her non-ADA compliant sidewalk.
You brought that up, George.
It hasn't been corrected.
Enough of bringing up the same old stuff. We've answered it, you've heard it a thousand times. No more. Bring us something new.
Correct it.
Bring us something new.
That's all I'm asking, correct it.
We've already answered that.
You haven't.
The state highway answer. George, I'm not going to argue with you, that's it. Don't bring the same stuff up.
The state highways said they have no jurisdiction in the county.
Bring us something new. That's it, George. You have three minutes left.
I need some answers.
Sorry.
I have a quick announcement, I guess you'd call. The, everybody knows that the Coming Lake improvement has been coming for a long time. They're going to start on that April, I mean, I'm sorry, May fourteenth and fifteenth. I think eight in the morning. They're, right at first, they're looking for CDL license holders, heavy equipment operators, laborers, and traffic control volunteers. And of course, the volunteer hours are used as matching. They're going to put in the boat dock, ADA parking, and paths, security, lighting. The volunteer, the actual volunteer portion itself will be, start on May sixteenth, but sign up, and I think stuff like that will be on the fourteenth. The gentleman's name is Kenny Mull, N C L L, and you can get his information, and there's stuff to take care of, you know, waivers, that type of thing. And that's at the Endow's website, W W W dot Endow dot org. So I just wanted to share that. I'm excited, it's been coming, and hopefully that'll be back, bring back the, the famous fishing hole that it used to be.
Very good, thank you very much. That's good information. Maybe we should put that on the next agenda, so we can kind of discuss it. It'll be too late, one, one, you know, okay.
Well, no, they'll, they'll have volunteers until it's done. They're expecting at least three weeks or more.
Okay. Thank you very much for that. Is there any other public comment? Just a brief announcement for, go ahead.
Sorry. I just thought this might be a good place to do it. We, I'm anti-Britain with representative Peorico. I just wanted to let everybody know, this month is our five-year anniversary for the, for the property. We're up to around one hundred and fifty employees throughout the company, and we're also going to be dedicating our new phase three leach pad expansion out there. So it's more just FYI for you guys, I wanted you to know, and I wanted to thank you guys for your support throughout the whole permitting process, everything we did to get the property going, and your continued support since we've been running. So for both the city and the county, you guys have been great to work with from our end. So anyway, that was all I had. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience on the phone line? Okay, and just before we get started, you can see we only have three commissioners here. Commissioner Codon is on Zoom right now, Commissioner Bybee's out of town, so we have a quorum, and Travis is going to be on Zoom for the, for the entire meeting. And in today's meeting, our finance director had an important meeting to show up to a little later, so we're going to go off, start the meeting on page five, item four, and everything under Elizabeth Francis, and we're going to go ahead and get that done before we open up the fire commission meeting. So first item on page four is item A. It's under Elizabeth. It's discussion for possible action. The ratification of grant applications to the community to go on a block grant program for coronavirus C D B G C B for funding of public health officer wages in an amount not to exceed fifty-eight thousand eight hundred dollars for the period of July first, two thousand twenty-one through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two. The required county match is zero. Elizabeth.
And I apologize that I was not more clear when I spoke with you about being as quickly as possible, but these first one, two, three, four, five items cannot be taken until following the ten a.m. public hearing for C D B G.
Sorry.
Yeah, so after that, then we can take those items.
Okay. I was misunderstood, so we're going to go back to the regular opening of the County Commission meeting, and the first, we'll recess the County Commission meeting and open the Fire Commission meeting, and the first item on the joint Fire Commission meeting is public comment. Is there any public comment on the Fire Commission meeting? Anyone on the phone? Audience, George, come forward.
Mr. Chairman, not receiving an answer in regards to whether your fire chief has inspected the interest of the address located Avenue D and Highway ninety-three, no through the Hobbie A and. That design, again, is poor at best, hazardous, does not meet ADA, and poses a problem for larger emergency equipment.
Again, George, you're bringing the same thing up a hundred times. I'm sorry about that. We, it's built, it's there, that's it. Give us something new. Give me something new.
It does.
Sorry, George, I'm not going to, we're not going to listen to that. You brought it up a thousand times. Bring us something new.
You're neglecting the safety issue.
Give me, give me something new, George. We're not neglecting anything.
You are.
Give me, give me something new, please.
You know, I'm getting notice from the city in regards to the equipment or property that I have.
I'm not the city, George.
It's the same doggone thing.
We're not the city.
When you either have one break, next time you don't.
George, come on, give me a break.
I'm going to give you a break.
Yeah.
You need to be accountable.
Give me something new.
Correct that situation. Period. You didn't want the job, you should have stayed home.
Hey, George, that's it. You keep bringing the same thing, I'm not going to argue with you.
Tell it's corrected, I'm going to keep bringing it up.
That's it. Oh, you're going to keep getting shot down, too. That's it. Okay, anybody else? Anybody other phone comment on the phone? Okay, we're going to go into the meeting. First item is item more, is discussion for update on the fire district progress. Brett North, fire chief, and Pat Stork, volunteer fire chief.
Morning.
Good morning.
How's it going? Still a little bit of work again, but.
That's fine.
Everything's going? Pretty good out there. That meeting Tuesday night, there's some people that's going to kind of run out of stage one. You've got to organize, like, keep track of what you're doing, set down some rules on it and everything, so we're now have eleven members running out of that stage. So stuff's going pretty good. Went and looked at capital improvement projects, I guess that's another item coming out, so all this has been to that, on that item, so other than that, I didn't come out.
From our end, everything's been running pretty smooth. Been pretty busy lately, twice in the last ten days. Had all the three ambulances out on nine one one calls last Sunday. We had all three of them gone in the county. We were down to nothing at that point, we weren't able to muster another one, but for the most part, everything's been running good. We're still doing trainings every Thursday. Most of the participants we're getting right now are Lackawanna that's been showing up. Still doing Zoom trainings with EMS, still getting some fairly good participation on that, so all the calls have went fairly smooth, everything we've had, so I think we're running pretty smooth for the most part.
Does Lackawanna come into your facility for the, that's, that's good to know.
Yeah, and we are doing a, we have an exterior firefighter class going right now that we have going. I have participants from Bald Mountain, one from McGill, some from out to the hemp farm, and then some with our department, so.
Yeah, I think there's a Lackawanna people.
Yeah, Lackawanna, Lackawanna McGill, yeah, Lackawanna McGill, the, one person from McGill, and the rest, Lackawanna, like I said, has been the biggest participant here recently with everything, so. I think the other departments are doing, you know, they're doing training at their own station and stuff, so. Just so they know, it's open. We offer it every, every week, we're doing training, so. And then if they have any request for anything, you know, to go over there, we're more than willing to go over there and put on something for them if they need something like truck training or just whatever, anything we can participate in and help with.
Yeah, they, most of our stations, one, they were approved, they were doing monthly trainings on their own and stuff, so, and I've given them a list of classes they can take up of, for the firefighter, exterior firefighter, you can give them on target solutions, so a lot of them have been going, they just won't get a certificate at the end of it from the state, but at least they're doing something.
But they do, yeah, they do get a certificate from target solutions, that they can, you can read for files, yeah.
They can add to their files later, but as far as passing it through the state fire marshal's office, they have to, but at least they got the knowledge, so.
Good.
So.
That it?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Page two, item two, discussion for possible action, the approval to retroactively adjust the step, increase, step increase for the fire chief Brett North from step one to step two effective April first, two thousand twenty-one. Elizabeth?
I can just finish this.
Okay, Jim?
Yeah, I'll take that. So my apologies to the board, when we did the step increases on the, for the exempt and the, and the non-exempt, yeah, but I missed doing the one for Chief North, so I want to make sure that we have that retroed back to April first.
Any comments by any of the commissioners? Okay, I'll, for motion to approve. Motion by Ian?
Second.
Second by Lori? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thanks Travis, I've, I've documented. Travis is online. Thanks Travis. Okay. Item three on page two is discussion for possible action, the direction for approval related to the revenues and departments for FY two thousand twenty-two, and it's good with me just to address it as, as addressed?
Yes.
Okay.
As presented.
As presented. Okay, Elizabeth, why don't you take this?
Okay, so I did hand out to you this morning a summary of where we are with the budget, and I'll just kind of quickly run through that for, because we do have one commissioner on the phone who doesn't have this information, and it will put it into the record verbally, and we can discuss any questions that are. So the following amendments have made, been made from the tentative budget. Some of these you are aware of, some of these you are not, and they are in the budgets, but if you disagree with them, we can remove them. Okay, first of all, was the changes for employee benefits, for workers' compensation, and health insurance to reflect actual renewal rates. So those adjustments were made. And then I increased the public health officer contract services for ongoing contract obligations. The public health officer contract reads that he is to be paid five thousand dollars a month as long as the World Health Organization has a declared pandemic or the U.S. government has a emergency declaration. Both of those are still in place, and I don't see those being removed anytime soon. So I have upgraded that amount, that line item, to five thousand dollars a month for all of next year. If we don't spend it, and it does go down to one thousand in January or whatever, we can just, that, that will drop to your end even balance at the end of the year. But I have no idea when that's going to end, and we, that is how the contract's written. Increase to the sheriff's office patrol equipment for a new laptop. They have turned into IT, a laptop that we have been working on for several months now and cannot seem to get back past the blue screen of death. We've tried multiple different approaches. It is a seven-year-old laptop and should probably be replaced at this point, so I have increased that budget by fourteen hundred dollars to provide for that. An increase to technology equipment for firewall and switch for the new ten gig network backbone. So in working through the whole process of getting the new ten gig in place and getting the distribution system throughout the county of that fiber, we have found we need a couple more pieces of equipment, and I believe it's just a little bit over eleven thousand dollars for those two pieces of equipment that I have added into the IT budget. I did take a decrease to golf course water for the new city agreement, and I believe that that is somewhere around eighteen thousand dollars. That is going to be the cost of that, but I left it, I believe, at twenty thousand dollars in case there's overage. That's for the base rate, but if there's, there's an additional charge, should we go over the number of gallons for new use? So I just left the budget up to twenty thousand dollars in case we do go over that capped per gallon use. And then I did decrease software maintenance and support in the clerk's office for ABS services that are no longer needed. There was a six thousand dollar line item. I did correspond with the clerk about this. She did ask me about several different things as to whether or not they were in her budget. I went through the budget, they're all in there. So I did go ahead and decrease that amount because it is for software maintenance and support services that is no longer required on the ABS system. So I did reduce that. Updated central services and allocations for mass, central service allocations and master insurance numbers in the general and special, special revenue funds based on updated budgets. As you remember, that's an allocation based on FTEs, budgets, assets, and some of those numbers changed, so I updated those numbers throughout the budgets. And I increased the County Commission miscellaneous for economic relief funds pursuant to resolution two thousand twenty-one dash twenty, or thirty-two, and that's the fifty thousand dollars that have been added into the budget. So there are some items that we still need to discuss now. I want you to know in the backup that I've handed out, there is a summary by fund for the changes that have been made for each fund. I didn't give you everything because I thought the two hundred and twenty-three page document would make it all up, but this kind of is a summary of how those changes have impacted different funds. And then I showed you the reallocation for central services and master insurance based on the formulas. And then I, if we can, I would like to, because the next item is to discuss funding for the historic courthouse renovation based on information contained in the preliminary engineering report, and if we can open up Bill Calderwood's item that is located on page four, and it's item C one, we can discuss his findings on that preliminary engineering report in conjunction with the discussion on the budget on what that funding and requirements may be. So I'll let Bill kind of give you an update on what he's gotten from the engineers, and then we can talk about the related budget for next year.
And we can do this, just, just the way we're doing it?
You can combine items, so what I would do, Mr. Chairman, is announce that you're also opening concurrently item C one on page four.
Okay, so right now, we're still in the Fire Commission meeting, but we're also going to add on page four, item one, C one, which is Bill Calderwood, Public Works Director, discussion for possible action, the update with possible direction on the White Pine County Historic Courthouse building renovation. Is that good?
Yes.
Okay, that's where we're at. Go ahead, Bill.
Good morning. I guess the good news in our report from T S K is that the historic courthouse can be brought up to current standards. The cost for that is at seven million to bring it up to standards. Everything they identified, restroom fixtures, they added some remodels to the elevator, some exterior, like twenty-five percent of the exterior would be repaired, fifty percent of the interior repaired. They went through, and everything that they know for sure that needed to be repaired is within that seven million. Also within that seven million dollar price tag is a C mark is also added into there, so if we wanted to go that route, that cost is in there. They have about, let me see, six hundred, seven hundred and twenty thousand-ish for abatement. I know some abatement in the courthouse was done, I think in about two thousand. We had a Honeywell come in, and they upgraded all the HVAC at that time, and they did some abatement then. How extensive that abatement was, I don't know. I cannot find that documentation that they did it, but there is some allowances in there for that as well. How extensive that abatement was, I don't know. I cannot find that documentation that they did it, but there is some allowances in there for that as well. So it's, this price tag doesn't include construction costs as far as the offices. So like, I'll give you an example, like the courthouse, it has no insulation value at all to it. So when you think of some of the offices.